Chris? Jumping on?
In case anybody wants to talk.
I agree, Zoom in person. Chris Potter's jumping on. Wanted to try the hybrid model tonight for the, so we sent the Zoom link out for the students. So they wouldn't have to, you know, you never know if you're gonna get 10 or you're gonna get 30, especially toward the end of the year, so I wanted to offer them a Zoom link just in case. Chris on?
You on?
Okay. Final piece. This meeting of the common council is called to order. Flair, please call the roll.
Council, Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Here.
Harvey Terry. Warner.
Yeah.
Cleveland.
Yeah.
Valentine.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Carbone.
Here. Yeah.
Seven eyed John.
Thank you. Want to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting? Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's been so long since we've been doing these in person, like in go mode. Motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Motion by Jessica, second by John Allison. Questions on those? They're being done, call the roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Carbone. Seven eyed John.
Thank you. We also have the various reports from the departments in front of you. What's up the motion to approve those reports? Motion by Jim Bassett, second by Kevin Valentine. Any questions on any of those?
Uh, may I?
So the, the overall budget, yeah, so we were, actually, hold on one second. So obviously, we still have some bills that'll get charged back to the, the previous budget year, because it usually takes a, a month or so to cycle through that. But as of the last report I had, we were eighty-three percent expenditures. So we, we were, we're actually under where we thought we would be and, and under where we were the last ever, the budget before that. So, um, so the answer, the short answer to your question is I anticipate coming in under budget and actually adding some more money back into fund balance. So, um, we definitely, obviously, you know, it was a difficult year with COVID. A lot of moving parts, a lot of uncertain, especially early on, you know, something we kind of touched base on earlier in committee meeting with, with John Carbone, the finance committee, uh, you know, having to make some very, very hard decisions in really a short timeframe to do so. Uh, but I'm happy to say, you know, even though we had to make some tough choices, we've come through it. Uh, we, we definitely tightened the belt, give a lot of credit to the department heads. Uh, we all ran a tight ship and, you know, we, we got through it and we're gonna come in well under budget this year. So we, uh, financially, fiscally, uh, we did a really good job this year. And I think you'll, you'll probably in the May, if not the May meeting, then certainly June meeting, we'll, we'll have everything wrapped up for, for the fiscal year and you can see those final numbers, but, uh, all, all the direct, all the arrows are pointing in the right direction. So we're, we're doing well. Uh, city's healthy from a financial standpoint and, uh, you know, going forward with sales tax, you know, cranking back up, uh, you know, I think you're gonna see, uh, you know, some positive, uh, it's a positive numbers coming in, in the future here. So, you know, when you talk about, you know, your plaza, you know, the Wegmans, Walmart and everything in between, plaza's been cranking. Uh, you know, gas prices and other thing, I know I'm kind of getting off topic a little bit, but gas prices are going up. You know, obviously, you know, no one wants to see high gas prices, but it does have a positive impact on sales tax. And if you remember, you know, a year ago from now, not only were gas prices were low, but people weren't driving. Now, schools were closed, uh, a lot of people were working from home. So there wasn't a whole lot of traffic out there. So we had, uh, you know, the prices, the gas prices down, you had consumption down. Uh, now things are picking up, people are getting out, doing more. Uh, retail seems to be rebounding, restaurants are starting to get back on their feet. So, you know, all the, all the arrows are pointed in the, in the right direction. So very, very optimistic going forward. All things considered, we, we did very well. But, but done a lot worse. And, you know, a lot of municipalities, cities, villages, county governments struggle. You know, a lot of layoffs, furlongs, Allegheny County, you know, St. Ben County had, uh, I can't remember the number of, uh, early retirements they had, you know, I was proud to say, we did not, we did not lay one person off, we did not furlough anyone. You know, we were able to maintain our, our services that people rely on. We needed a policeman, you know, they, they came, needed an ambulance, you need a fire truck, where they were. You know, sewer pipe, water pipe broke, our guys were there. So, you know, we, we didn't, our services did not suffer at all and, uh, we, we came through. So there we are. Okay, so any other questions on any of the reports? You have the most, this is all the roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Carbone.
Yes.
Seven eyed John.
Thank you. See, you always get the long answer when you ask me.
Hey, I see.
Okay, committee reports, audit is up first.
The Honorable John J. Buckley, Mayor of the County Council, laid down, bills are approved via, now by audit, members of Brown and Bassett, which are Terry, Kevin Valentine, and Chairman Walker. Those are approved, also two million one hundred forty thousand three hundred forty-six dollars and seven cents. Community development, four thousand one hundred dollars an hour and thirty cents. Payroll of eighty-one thousand sixty-three dollars and forty-one cents.
It's a really nice thing and a nice feather in our cap. As you can see, Jason will get you a couple of these. You have these in the most we can scan. So for Jason and Chris Potter, we'll scan these and email them to you. Or even should I email them to you or Brian?
Yeah.
You got it. Okay, so we'll go get these out to you and Chris. I'll give those to you, Missy, so you can do that after the meeting tonight. But it's, you know, it could be a really nice project down there and, you know, the more, the more investment in Hornell, the better, so. Any, any question? I know. Yeah.
Going between the truck supply and the white office.
Yes. Well, they go. Good track record. Okay, so we have the motions. Any, any questions on any of those reports? The nun, please call the roll.
Brown.
Yeah.
Allison.
Yes.
Warner.
Yeah.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Patrick.
Yes.
Trevor.
Yeah.
Seven eyed John.
That brings us to the resolution portion of the meeting. And the first one is the aforementioned parking margins.
Whereas the chief for the city of Hornell has been conducted a survey regarding parking issues on Upper Bank Street in the city of Hornell. And whereas the police chief for the city of Hornell has informed the community that the street is being announced a loud talking on both sides of the street. And still have access to that neighborhood by motor vehicle vehicles. And whereas the common council for the city of Hornell hereby accepts the chief of police assessment. Now therefore, it is here for evolved that on three parking is hereby restricted on Delaware Avenue from the south side of Upper Dennis Street. From the south side of Upper Dennis Street to the, from Lincoln Street to Dennis Avenue. This act shall be effective as of April nineteen twenty twenty one.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion by Jeff Brown, second by Kevin Valentine. Any questions? Let's jump. Yeah. You say Delaware? Yeah, let's all amend that, so. Yeah, Upper Bank, why is that? Who wrote, did Ted write that one?
So what if it's Lincoln and Dennis Dennis, right?
Yes.
Between Lincoln and Dennis, yeah. So I should, so change. Just scratch that off and. Yeah, that one might be hard to implement if you want to.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have the motions. Any other questions? If not, hold the roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Trevor. Seven eyed John.
Thank you. And the next resolution is the EBA grant resolution.
Whereas the city of Hornell is working with the city of Hornell Industrial Development Agency to apply for an EBA grant funding public works and economic assistance. And whereas the common council for the city of Hornell believes it is in the best interest of the city of Hornell to enter into the co-application process. And whereas if the application granted the ensuing project complies with the city of Hornell master plan. And whereas the city of Hornell will have no obligation to fund the local share for the project if successful. And whereas the city of Hornell Industrial Development Agency has agreed to assume full responsibility for the sh- the local share of the project. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the city of Hornell Common Council hereby approves the co-application for the EBA grant application. To the mayor for the city of Hornell or the representative is authorized to sign any and all documents needed to complete the application.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion by John Carbone, second by John Allison. So this, you've all been probably following along with the news. It's really more of an IDA project. But it helps the application to have a city as a co-applicant. But the, the IDA is handling the application, the process. Something that we've been, you know, John and I, being IDU members, we've been working very closely with Sean and Griff as well. So there are a lot of moving parts behind the scenes with the, with the application and it's been kind of a, a process. But, you know, we want to do everything that we can to strengthen that, the, the application process and position ourselves in the best possible place. So we'll be successful. Um, you know, I, I probably already talked about the, you know, the, the new car shop and everything. You've read about it and heard about it, so I won't go into a twenty minute diatrag about it. Uh, but it's, it's, it's a great thing for Hornell, you know, adding two hundred and fifty eight. New jobs, uh, you know, the facility itself will, it will speak for, speak for itself. But, you know, really what it's doing is it's, it's table setting. So it's not, you know, I think you have to look past the Metro contract. Because as great as the Metro con- contract is going to be for Hornell and for Alstom. Having the ability to manufacture the car shells right here in Hornell. There's not too many places, even around the entire world, there's not too many places that, that can lay the claim that we can produce our own car shells. Most of the car shells that, that, you know, whatever, whether it's Alstom or any other company receives, they come from far, far away, in many cases overseas. And there's a huge cost, I mean, the cost to ship these things is astronomical. I know they were, they were originally looking at doing it up in Buffalo. They had planned it here in Hornell, which is huge for us. So this is really not just the Metro contract, but it positions Alstom very well in the future going forward. So when these other contracts come up and Alstom already has that built in infrastructure here. We're going to be even better positioned and more attractive to land those contracts. And that's what we really want to see. Historically, over the, over the decades, you know, the, you know, rail manufacturing is kind of up and flowing, right? So, you know, Alstom, what they want to do is they want to try to find that stability. Well, it's, it's a difficult thing to do in that industry. But the more infrastructure they, they put in place, the more capabilities they have at hand, the more tools they have in the toolbox, the better off that they're going to be. And the better off that will be in our workforce. So, uh, like I said, anything that we can do to kind of help us along, we're happy to do it.
Mayor, your friends are we for the Alstom show.
Yes. Yep.
Gives them a competitive edge as well because now these, once they develop these shells, they only have to transport from showman down to South, enough to South Yard.
Main shot.
Yeah, so I think it's, I think it'll give them a little bit of competitive edge at cost of shipping them from. Or from Italy, I think the last group that came from Italy, they're manufacturing on there, they shipped over. So I think it's kind of a hot line for how to.
And all those train sets, you know, no matter if you're talking about Metro in Chicago or, you know, New York City. You know, you can only refurb them so many times before you need replacements. And when you need those replacements, having that ability to make them from the ground up is huge. So. Okay, any other questions? If not, we have the motions, so please call the roll.
Brown.
Yeah.
Allison.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yeah.
Patrick.
Yes.
Trevor.
Yes.
Seven eyed John.
Thank you. Those are the first two resolutions. At this point, I'm going to ask the council to waive the agenda. So we can add the Canis Steel Street Bridge onto the next. So is there a motion to waive the agenda? A motion by Jessica Cleveland, second by John Carbone. Any questions? Hold the roll.
Brown.
Yeah.
Allison.
Yes.
Warner.
Yeah.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Trevor. Seven eyed John.
Thank you. So this, uh, this was, Missy, did you make copies of this, right?
I did.
Okay, so everyone has it for them? So the Canis Steel Street Bridge, um, is something that's been in the hopper since, uh, since Sean was sitting in this chair. And, you know, we've been discussing it and we got the, uh, we were awarded the, uh, the money some years ago. But these, you know, as you know, these bridges and these projects take, take a lot of time, right? So here we are, you know, four, five, maybe even six years later. I couldn't remember when, when the conversation started. It's a ways back. Um, but we, uh, we had the bid opening recently. And every time we have a bid opening, there's a process that we go through because we have, you know, numerous bids that come in. And it's not always just as easy as taking the lowest bid. Uh, Labella, who we partner with, they score all the contracts, make sure all the ducks are in a row. And there's, you know, nothing that's out of line or there's something that jumps out at them. So I, I was trying to get Labella to, uh, I was trying to push him to get it done by Friday. So we go out in the packets. They weren't quite ready. So they sent this to us at the end of the day today. But just because of what it is in construction season, I didn't want to put it off another month. So, uh, the Canis Steel Street Bridge obviously has been closed for some time now. We want to get things going, so, um, that's, uh, that's kind of where we are. So, um, you want to read the resolution?
Whereas the project for the bridge replacement Canis Steel Street over Crowe Creek in the city of Hornell, Steben County. Is eligible for funding under Title twenty-three U.S. Code. As amended, the cost being a portion of the costs such program to be borne are the ratio of eighty percent federal funds and twenty percent non-federal funds. And whereas the city of Hornell desires to advance the project by making a commitment of one hundred percent of the non-federal share of the costs of the bridge replacement. Canis Steel Street over Crowe Creek in the city of Hornell, Steben County. Now therefore, the Hornell Common Council duly convened does hereby resolve that the Hornell Common Council hereby approves the above subject project. And it is hereby further resolved that the Hornell Common Council hereby authorizes the city of Hornell to pay in the first instance one hundred percent of the federal and non-federal share of the cost of designing lighted way incidentals and acquisitions and construction and construction inspection work for the project or portions thereof. And it is further resolved at the sum of two million seven hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars is hereby appropriated from federal and New York State funds and made available to cover the cost of participation in the above phase of the project. It is further resolved that in the event the full federal and non-federal share costs on the project exceed the amount appropriated above, the city of Hornell shall convene as soon as possible to appropriate said access amount upon, immediately upon the notification by the New York State Department of Transportation now. It is further resolved that the mayor of the city of Hornell be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, or reimbursement requests for federal aid and state aid on behalf of the city of Hornell with the New York State Department of Transportation in connection with the advancement or approval of the project and providing for the administration of the project in municipalities. First instance, funding of project costs and permanent funding of the local share of federal aid and state aid eligible project costs. And all project costs within appropriations, therefore, that are not so eligible. It is further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be filed with the New York State Commissioner of Transportation by attachment to any necessary agreement in connection with the project. And it is further resolved, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
That was a long one.
Yeah.
Good job. Is there a resolution or is there a motion to approve? Motion by John Carbone, second by Jeff Brown. You know, it, it, it's kind of funny in a way because I remember when I was on the, on the council, you know, I'd come and talk to Mayor Hogan. Say, hey, we got to, we really need to do something with this bridge and we need to replace it. And, you know, those conversations started, you know, some years ago. And, and because these projects take so long, um, you know, when Steve came onto the council, he'd come to me, hey, we really need to get something going for this bridge. So I was like, it's coming, it's coming. So that's, these things take, uh, take a long time.
Right in front of the issue.
Yeah, it'll, so they're, they're planning on getting going in June and then finishing up in fall. So probably October, I know they're looking at October, maybe November. But, uh, definitely having the whole thing finish this construction season. So it'll, it'll be nice. And, uh, you know, it's kind of struggle. I mean, you know, you grew up there, you know, Kevin, you grew up in the neighborhood. You know, tho- those three bridges that go over Cosby Creek, um, you know, Grand Street Bridge, I remember Grand Street Bridge was, Jason, you might remember this. You're covering it back in those days. Grand Street Bridge is actually ranked the worst bridge in the entire county at one point. And then, you know, obviously South Division, um, that, that'll be hopefully the next, uh, one, one good nugget. And the state budget is they, they did fund, uh, Bridge New York again. So we're going to try to go after that and get the South, the South Division Street Bridge in on that program. Um, so hopefully, you know, we'll be successful at some point. And these things take time, obviously. But, um, you know, the goal is to have all our bridges, uh, you know, brand new in the next, uh, you know, the coming years. And, and after that, we, I think, uh, probably Church Street, that bridge is starting to show its age a little bit. Uh, but, you know, we, we've had, had a lot of success with bridges, uh, in the city here. You know, most of our bridges, uh, you know, once these bridges go in, you know, none of us are going to have to worry about it. Other than just, uh, you know, the maintenance of them. So they, they typically have, uh, you know, fifty year lifespan or approximately that. So, uh, good, uh, good, good news, good news for the residents of the ninth ward and whoever else travels that way. All right. Any other questions? The nun, call the roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Trevor. Seven eyed John.
Thank you. Okay, no petitions, but we do have twenty. Okay, Missy's got the points.
Now therefore, be it resolved that claims the amount of two million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy cents. The audit will be presented as audible. Common Council, two million one hundred and forty-two thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars and seven cents. Community development, four thousand one hundred and five dollars and thirty cents. Payroll, eighty-one thousand sixty-three dollars and forty-one cents.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Jeff, second by Kevin. Any questions? Hold the roll.
Brown.
Yeah.
Allison.
Yeah.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Trevor.
Yes.
Seven eyed John.
Thank you. Look at everyone. Everyone's putting their packets away earlier.
Seven eyed John.
Oh, okay. Is that what you all do on Zoom? Uh, okay, so in this lane, it's just a couple, uh, quick updates. Uh, speaking of, uh, bid openings, we had a bid opening for the sewer lining project. Something you're all familiar with, uh, great, uh, great program that we've had here in the city. Um, so Kenyon Pipeline was awarded, uh, the latest contract and that's for a hundred and ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. So just, just a hair under two hundred thousand. And, and this will be for sections of the main trunk line that goes through Pearl Street, uh, part of Main, Partie. A portion of Elm and portion of Elm and John Street. And also a portion of Canis Steel Street to Loader Street. So the, one of, one of the, I guess, one of the downsides of the program, if, if there really is one. And I, and I don't know if there is, because we've really used it well to our advantage. Um, but I, I guess if there were downside, it's the, the CDBG money is restricted for certain sized trunk lines. So, so anything eight inches under is not eligible. So in the, in the city budget that the council, uh, passed and adopted recently, we had, uh, a twenty thousand dollar line item in there uh, to designate towards the smaller, the smaller lines. And these are the lines that are in the, in the neighborhoods. So not that the larger trunk lines. So, so what, what the thought is, is to try to over, for a couple of years, build that up. And then go after this neighborhood over here or that neighborhood over there and can continue the program. I think, I think the reason, and this is just me speculating, but I think the reason that the smaller lines, the smaller collection lines weren't included is because the, the program would just be overwhelmed and they, they, you know, wouldn't have enough funding to do all of that. So they restrict it to the larger ones. So, uh, that's something that, uh, has been very successful for us. Again, it's infrastructure that people don't see but rely on every minute of the day. Um, you know, when your sewer backs up, that's not a good thing, right? When that's the phone call that you don't want to ask. So, uh, you know, doing that is the, the further investment in the community, further investment in the infrastructure. And it's something that'll last probably, you know, similar to the bridges, probably lasts our lifetimes. You know, the original sewer network that we had in place dates back to the eighteen hundreds. So think about that, eighteen hundreds. I mean, that's pretty, I, I don't know what it cost back then, but whatever it was, pretty good bang for your buck, right? So, but we're at that point and we've been very successful and we'll, uh, we'll keep that going. We, we do have a couple more sections that we can apply for funding for, but we're, we're starting to run out because we're, you know, we're, I'd say we're probably, uh, I don't know, ninety, ninety-five percent through, through the main lines that we can apply these funds for. But, you know, we'll, we'll keep pushing until they're all buttoned up and, uh, and we'll, we'll turn our attention to the smaller collection lines and go after those as well and upgrade them. Um, one other quick note. We, uh, sticking with the same theme of bid openings, excuse me, I'm still getting used to wearing glasses, so on and off we go. Um, the bid, we had the bid opening for the latest Bosie's House and that was on, that's on Front Street. I, I hope you've had an opportunity to, to drive by and, and take a look at it. Beautiful house, great program. We'll, we'll, you know, hopefully we'll keep that going into the future. Um, the winning bid or the high, the high bid was one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the house on Front Street, so. Ian, Hannah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh. You know, so very, very successful. The, the only concern that I have going forward is if, if you look at the cost of materials right now, then they're, they're skyrocketing. You know, the price of lumber is, you know, double, tripled. Triple, John? I don't, probably no better than I would. Triple? Well, that's about right. You go up to Lowe's, you know, piece of, piece of plywood, piece of whatever, what? Yeah. So, so, you know, we're hoping that the cost will, you know, start to level off and come down a little bit. Because, you know, the, the next, the plan is for the next two Bosie houses is to be placed on Preston Ave, the site of the horrific fires of two thousand nineteen. And, uh, you know, I'd like to do one next year and one the year after. And, and really, you know, revitalize that neighborhood and that street. And, uh, but, uh, you know, we'll, we'll keep our eye, you know, we've got some time. Uh, Bosie's, you know, for the next house, they, they start in September when classes start up again. So, you know, we'll, we'll keep our eye on what the prices are looking like and where we are, but let's go.
Chips over. Thank you.
Pardon?
Here, chips.
Chips? Oh, yes. So chips, uh, I don't have in front of me, but chips increased. Oh, I'm sorry, how many millions did chips go up? I should have brought that down. Uh, chips went up, Cave, New York was restored and was increased. And Winter Recovery was restored and increased. So, uh, between the three, there's probably a couple hundred more billion in those. You know, I have it written down top on the, I've got in my notes, I should have brought those down.
Yeah, some streets designated that way.
Yeah, so we'll be able to, uh, with, and I don't have, the, the state hasn't released, they, they released the, the total dollar amounts, like spread across the state, but they haven't broken it down. I haven't seen the numbers per municipality, what the increase is. So, but whatever it is, it's more. So we'll, we'll be able to do more street paving this year than we have done in prior years. Actually, this past year, we, we paid eleven city streets in, in alleyways this past year. Uh, but we did it at a reduction because of the, the condition, the fiscal condition of the state. We actually withheld twenty percent. So we, so there was twenty percent that we did not spend this past year because we were, we were basically instructed by the state that, that, that wasn't going to be available. Um, still working that out with our state representatives. If it will be reimbursed, I'm hopeful that we will be reimbursed that twenty percent. We'll be able to roll that over into this year's budget. Haven't, I haven't heard the final word on it yet. I do have good news on AIM. Um, last year, as you know, the state withheld, uh, five percent of, uh, some of the AIM payments that were going out to municipalities, including here in the city of Hornell. I, I've been told in, in the state budget, that five percent will be allocated. That, that'll be sent out to the municipality. So they're not going to just sit on it. So AIM didn't, did not go up. I still strongly advocate for an increase in AIM. There's a conversation I was having with our state representatives just last week. I told them, hey, great job on chips, great job on Cave New York, great job on Winter Recovery. It's been, uh, you know, twelve going, going on thirteen years since we've had an AIM increase. And, you know, it's, it's always rubbed me the wrong way that foundation aid for schools seemingly goes up every year. That's their, their base, uh, their base funding. But for cities and villages, you know, that AIM, those AIM payments have been high. And I mean, that, it, and, and one of the other arguments that I've always posed when I met NIACOM events or, you know, with other mayors or, you know, talking to our state reps is adjusted for inflation, our number actually goes down. Because, you know, and you, you know, that's just being in business, you know. If you have a dollar, that dollar doesn't have the same buying power today than it did, you know, ten years ago or fifteen years ago. I mean, you factor in inflation and you just don't have that same purchasing power. So that, that's my argument for AIM. I know I'm preaching to the choir on that one. But, uh, you know, as long as I'm around, I'll, I'll keep pushing and, uh, NIACOM will keep pushing. That's always been, you know, one of their, uh, one of their big agenda items. And, you know, they've been successful in certain areas. In other areas, uh, you know, it, it takes time. So we'll just keep, keep pushing. You know, we'll, we'll enjoy the wins over here and we'll keep pushing over on the side. So. Okay, those are my updates. Anything from you guys? All as well out there. All right. Well. Sounds good.
Are they going to relax the stipulation about people using hats to go to Bath and Bat other than for work? I guess right now we can't take the hat lesson unless you go more for work.
That's true.
Is that going to be relaxed or?
Uh, eventually, it, well, you know, the, the, part of the issue there is the social distancing and the buses. So the hat literally has to send twice as many buses out for the same amount of people that they would normally accommodate. And, and that's, that's a strain on the personnel, which, you know, personnel is always kind of a tough thing with hat anyway. Because, you know, more, not, not always, but, you know, some of the drivers are, a good portion of the drivers historically have been retirees, you know, looking for something extra to do. So, you know, when you have certain routes, uh, like Bath, it's been, you know, popular route. But, you know, mainly because of the, you know, the county employees, you know, we want to make sure we keep that going. Um, but, you know, it, it's a conversation that, uh, that Kim and I have had and Josh being the chairwoman for that committee. So it's an ongoing conversation. You know, we're, we're trying to find out, we're trying to figure out the path back for hat. You know, it's, it's a lot easier to, you know, when the restrictions loosen up in certain areas, you know, if you, if you have a restaurant or a business and you can, you know, go back to, you know, whatever percent capacity, you know, the, the hat bus is still a small vehicle. Really, I mean, it's, it's not a school bus. It's not, uh, you know, a Greyhound. So we're very limited what we can do because whatever we do, we want to make sure we're doing it safely. I mean, that's, you know, during a pandemic, that's always the number one concern. Are we doing it in a safe manner that's protecting the passengers and the driver? And that's really been, you know, first and foremost, the priority. Uh, as we go down this path and the vaccines are out there and things are loosening up, we'll, you know, we're obviously monitoring that. And, you know, we, we want to get back to normal as quick as possible, but, you know, we don't want to do anything that's, you know, not appropriate either. So, so we're taking the cautious approach. So, so that's kind of where we are. Okay. All right, well. You're quiet over there tonight. Oh. First time. Okay, read that. I'll entertain them. Look at that. It's forty-five minutes. That's probably one of our shoulder ones, right? I feel guilty letting up. All right, motion to adjourn. Look at the hands going, but they all draw. Motion by John Allison, second by Jeff Brown. Any questions? All the roll.
Brown.
Yeah.
Allison.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Trevor.
Yes.
Seven eyed John.
Thank you. We are adjourned.